Please rise. Okay, if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Giggie?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Here.
Mr. Shin?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Morin, has there anybody registered for public appearance?
No one has signed up for public appearance, Mrs. Chairman.
Okay, I'd like to take this moment to welcome our newest member to the Greater Lowell Tech School Committee who's from Drakett, and he's been on the Drakett School Committee before, who's done a very effective job in the Drakett, in the town of Drakett, and now we welcome him here, Mr. Matt Sheehan here, to the Greater Lowell Technical High School Committee. You've been elected for a four-year seat, we're very happy for you, so welcome, and if you'd like to give us a few words, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, thank, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, you know, I appreciate it, like you said, I did three terms on the school committee in Drakett, which was, it was an amazing time, I think it's just an absolute honor and privilege to be elected, number one, to be sitting here with all you gentlemen, it's, it's an absolute honor, but, you know, to be sitting next to Paul Morin, who twenty years ago was my culinary arts teacher, you know, they always say, everybody, every kid has a story about a teacher, Paul's that teacher to me, if it wasn't for Paul, you know, who knows, I mean, he saw something in me when I was a freshman, and I owe a lot of my success, not only to Paul, but, you know, my amazing parents are sitting in the crowd, I'm gonna be forty next month, but, you know, my parents still show up at meetings, but, you know, if it wasn't for them, and like I said, an amazing teacher in Paul Morin, you know, who knows, but, it's an absolute honor to be sitting here next to Paul, so, I'm looking forward to working with all you gentlemen, so, thank you.
That's you. Likely.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Shin.
Just want to say one thing.
Mr. O'Hair.
Not only one thing, you mentioned your mother and father, it was always good to see you, because they always helped me, we all lived in the same neighborhood.
Absolutely, God's country, right? Yep. Thanks.
Okay, and to move on with our meeting, our school committee communications, does anybody have any communication?
Yes.
And this'll be the report of our student representative, thank you for coming.
Thank you. The freshman and sophomore class hosted their fourth annual community spaghetti dinner in honor of our veterans on November eighth in the cafeteria. Students from both classes stayed after school to help set up and serve food. The NTHS induction ceremony took place on November eighth, we inducted fifty-one new members for the 2018-2019 school year. This year, our students were inducted into both National Honor Society and National Technical Honor Society. The outing club is preparing to participate in the Massachusetts Envirothon, a natural resource education program for high school students, emphasizing hands-on, team-oriented problem-solving, and community involvement that prepares young people for environmental careers and active citizenship. They are planning to attend their first workshop on November sixteenth at UMass Amherst. The GLTHS pep rally is scheduled for Wednesday, November twenty-first, in the gymnasium during periods three, four, ten, and eleven. We are planning on a performance from our cheerleading team and dance club. We will also host our annual student versus staff basketball game. Student council has planned our GLTHS Spirit Week for November fifteenth through November twenty-first. Spirit days include Thursday, November fifteenth, Tie-Dye Thursday, Friday, November sixteenth, Freedom Friday, patriotic, red, white, and blue, Monday, November nineteenth, Marvel Monday, Superhero Day, Tuesday, November twentieth, Title Town Tuesday, Boston Sports Gear, Wednesday, November twenty-first, is Griffin Pride Day, blue and gold. Skills USA students are planning to attend their fall state leadership conference at the Best Western in Marlboro on November eighteenth through the twentieth, where they will participate in leadership workshops and activities to help members learn skills and tools which they can bring back to their chapter. Greater Lowell students will volunteer at the E4All Locally Yours event at UTEC on November sixteen. E4All is a local organization that helps foster entrepreneurial growth in Lowell. On Saturday, November twenty-fourth, Greater Lowell students will volunteer to assist with the City of Lights Parade in Lowell. We will also have our holiday float on display. This year's theme is How the Grinch Stole Christmas. The parade will begin at five p.m. This year's junior masquerade prom is planned for November thirtieth at Lendy's in Drakett from six p.m. to ten p.m. Tickets are on sale until November sixteenth. Now, for some athletics. The boys and girls soccer teams had tremendous success this fall, both qualified for the MIAA Division II State Tournament, and both also returned, a number of key players making the future look bright for the programs. Cross-country wrapped up a successful campaign by hosting the CAC League Meet on October twenty-seventh. Despite some rainy conditions, the team ran well and placed several runners among the top finishers in both the boys' and girls' races. Girls volleyball battled all season long, eventually coming up one game short of making the MIAA Division III Tournament. The Lady Griffins featured a number of young players and should be in the mix for a tournament spot next season. Golf had a great season in their first year as a full varsity program. The team captured the school's first-ever match win over Greater Lawrence and followed that up with the solid fifth-place team finish at the CAC League Match on October nineteen. The cheer team did a tremendous job this season, battling through some injuries and blending in some new athletes on the team. While they did not repeat a CAC and D1 North Regional Championship this fall, they look ready to rebound this winter and beyond. Football currently stands at seven and three on this season, and will, and will look to continue their winning ways over the next two weeks as they head into their holiday clash with Lowell Catholic on November twenty-first. This game will be held at Chelmsford High School at about six p.m.
Thank you, Maya, nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thank you for filling us in, Maya. Entertained a motion for the approval of minutes from the October eighteenth, two thousand and a minute meeting.
So, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Mr. Lemay, seconded by Mr. Morin. Roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Shin?
I'll abstain, because I wasn't here.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
A report of the treasurer, we have the approval of the warrants. Motion by Mr. Booton to waive the reading. Seconded by Mr. Giggie.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Shin?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay, motion to approve the expenditures of the sum of three million, five hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents for the past month. Motion by Mr. Morin, seconded by Mr. Booton, roll call, please.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Shin?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay, a report of general counsel, is there any report tonight?
No, nothing to report, I'm happy to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Macaro. Okay, and now we're gonna move on to the report of our superintendent director, Joe Mastacola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, the first item on the agenda is the announcement of a grant and a subsequent presentation about the grant. One of the things I've learned as a superintendent over the years is that teachers and teacher leaders within the school district really make things happen in a positive way for students. When a teacher brings up a thought process of something that would impact the school, it's something I know that I've spent a lot of time to be open to, and be able to accept, and accept thought process for something like that. Ms. Lauren Friedman came to Ms. Davis and I early last year to talk about a program that would impact well-being for students. She also went forward to say that there's a potential grant out there that we might be able to get to help seed the program, to be able to start this up and be able to impact the students. The program deals with creating resiliency in students that are outside the district for a variety of different reasons that need to come in. I'm proud to announce, due to the good work of Ms. Davis and Ms. Friedman, that we did acquire the grant here, and I've asked Ms. Friedman to come, make a short presentation about the components of the grant, and where this may lead to in the impact in our school district. Thank you, Ms. Friedman.
Hi.
Thank you all so much for having me, it's a pleasure to be here and to have worked here for fourteen years as an adjustment counselor. I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to share our new program with you. It's been about two years in the making of researching and doing some feasibility data studies, which I used to apply for the grant this summer, and we were, of course, excited to be notified that we were selected this fall. The program is called RISE, which stands for Resilience in Student Effort, which aligns its mission with our core values. What it is, is a transition classroom, which is designed to help students returning from an extended absence from school due to medical, mental health, concussion, or birth and parenting reasons, and it gives them an individualized plan and dedicated space to complete their missed schoolwork when they come back to school. I want to be clear that it's not for students who have been suspended, it's not a behavioral program in any way, it'll be located in guidance, and there are two staff in the program that will support their academic and emotional needs as they re-acclimate to school. The program is short-term and will provide six to eight weeks of monitoring after they've returned, where most of the makeup work should be completed in that first period, too. And next is some of the expected outcomes. The number-one goal is for students to return to classes with a hundred percent of their missed work completed. The other important ones to point out are attendance and dropout rate, hopefully fewer need for summer school or repeating the year due to all the missed work. We've actually already seen some positive effect this year with medical grades are down, incompletes are down from term one last year to term one this year. Incompletes are actually down over fifty percent, which is really nice, and the program's only been operating for about a month. The, this data, you know, the suggested outcomes came from the Brookline Center, which helped us start the program, and they've helped start over a hundred programs across the state since two thousand and four. In our program here, we've had sort of this soft start for the last month, and students already are feeling more secure with a plan to complete the work, whereas in the past, they return and are pretty stressed out facing a mountain of work after a pretty stressful life event. Now they have time, a plan, and adult support in making up the work, and you can already see the relief on their faces when we talk about the program at their re-entry meeting or watching them check off assignment after assignment as they're completing it. And lastly, I thought you all might be interested in the other vocational schools who are, are they're exploring programs or have an existing program. I've visited the one at Asabet Valley and at Blackstone Valley, and they have been incredibly supportive and just wonderful in working with us and helping us get this going. I'm very grateful to Mr. Mastacola, Ms. Davis, Mr. Albert, and Mrs. Dincarnasio for their support and everything they've done to get the program off the ground. It's truly been an interdepartmental collaboration. We are super excited about the success we've already seen and are very hopeful that this program can be a permanent part of Greater Lowell Tech in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I do.
Sure.
Chairman?
Mr. Booton, question?
Hi, Ms. Friedman. You, you mentioned a couple of things, incompletes are already down fifty percent, you've got a fourteen percent decrease. Will, will we be provided next year, I'm going with this in the sense of we got a nineteen-thousand-dollar grant right now, if this works well, and we don't get the grant, are we going to be provided with that information? You'll have that information?
Yes.
I think doing the grant, you have to fill out certain information?
Yes.
I, I think it would be important on us to get that info in case we need to add it into the budget next year if we're not getting this grant to keep this going. You know, in a personal sense, my, my son had hip surgery while he was a junior in school and in a senior, missed class, the school was fabulous with him at the time, but could have used a little bit more help, and I think this might, at home, he got the help he needed, but coming back to school, he didn't get as much as what you have here, so, I know that's gonna keep the kids focused, going, and to get them back to a hundred percent of any missed classes would be awesome, so, if we can get that next year, if that's something to keep on the radar, Mr. Mastacola, that if we're not getting another grant, it may be something we want to keep going if the numbers work out.
Yeah, absolutely, we will be collecting data throughout the program this year, the Brookline Center has provided us with a data portal that they use for all of their programs, and so we can collect most any data you'd be looking for in attendance, and student satisfaction and returning and things like that.
Thank you.
Question by Mr. Lemay?
To either Lauren or the superintendent, do we know if this grant is gonna be available in the future? Was this a pilot program, or? It's a pilot, it may be available. I think one of the things that we intend, and one of the reasons why we've asked Morin to be here tonight, is to lay some groundwork for the future, exactly what Mr. Booton is talking about. We anticipate that we're gonna have great success, and this will be a budgetary item that we'll need to talk to to sustain it, not only for personnel to work in the program, but for build-out, some build-out in the building, we gotta find a better space to be able to manage this. The return, as was mentioned earlier, is just incredible what we get for a small amount of money, for the impact it makes on students, so, if the money's there, yes, we'll go after it in other sources, if not, we're gonna have to find a way to fund it in the budget, it's a wise investment.
Okay, next question by Mr. O'Hair.
Just a quick question, looking at the makeup of what, what you're doing, many of the kids in the school are academic, many of the kids are technical, how do you handle that when you're going to address these students? They, they're out of their technical area and they're into the programs that you're implementing here?
So, it'll be an individualized plan for each student, because each student will be out for different reasons, but the idea is when they return, they go back to the classroom for as many periods as their teachers are comfortable. So if they come back on a shop week, they wouldn't go back, they wouldn't be in the classroom for more than half of that day, because they need to get current and make up their shop work as well, so we're keeping that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming to our meeting, Ms. Friedman.
You're very welcome, thank you for having me. Good night.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, I wanted to include in your packet a timeline for the business manager search, while very aggressive, the dates are very aggressive, I wanted to let you know that I am moving forward with this, and I want you to know this is a very important, as you know, position in the district. Again, those timelines are very aggressive, you may have asked, why is February fourteenth an appointment date? Well, I'm hoping if the candidate that we get, most likely will be on the contract somewhere, right? So, to be able to build in that time, so whether it's February fourteenth, or March twenty-fifth, or, or probably before April first, I want to let you know that the components in the timeline, what we're going forward with. As I mentioned before, which is customary, I'll be looking, when we start the screening team, for a few candidates from the school committee to participate. In the past, a few members have participated, as you know, by state statute, this is a selection of the school committee, it's a recommendation from the superintendent, and a selection by the school committee. So, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be posting this globally, through a variety of different sources, and actively, actively, I will be sending out to the various organizations the posting, I'm hoping we get many, many, many posting applicants for this, so we can go through them, I think the more, the better. Not being biased, but I am, I can't believe that this isn't a favorable job for a business manager position anywhere in the state, it's an outstanding position to have. As you know, George has made a commitment to be with us till July one, we'll be able to weave his expertise in all the way through, obviously through our budget process, which we've started already, we're well into it for next year. As you know, in about two short months, we'll be going through our finance meetings, so, any questions, comments about the timeline, from anyone? Okay, next on the agenda, there is an approval and a vote needed for three of our staff members to attend the Educators Marine Workshop in Paris Island on April sixteenth to nineteenth, which is April school vacation here, is no cost to the school district. Mr. Bladus, Mr. Chadwick, and Mr. Dion, who are all veterans, requested to attend, and I approved it, and we needed out-of-district approval by the school committee.
Okay, question by Mr. Booton.
I'd like to, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Booton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tatsias?
Now I have a question.
Any questions? Question by Mr. Booton?
So it's school vacation, do, they're going on their week off, do they get any comp time for this, any extra days? So our three teachers are volunteering to give up their time to benefit the school.
Okay, good, great, sorry, not good, great, that's, I think all I need to hear.
Question by Mr. O'Hair.
Just want to let you know that a few of us on the school committee at the time took this tour at, at Paris Island, and at the Marine Corps quarters, and I thought it was very, very informational, and it was well worth the trip that we made when we went there. I think the person who was in charge of it was the head of the Marine Corps Depot in New Hampshire, and he's the person that put the package together, but it was very, very informative on what, some kids are kind of tough kids coming in, and they all come out different type of people, you know, at, at the end of that, a week or two weeks in Paris Island.
I agree, this is a great opportunity for our staff to go there, as well as to have this knowledge, so they can share with our students who are considering enlisting, and if you look at some of the criteria that they'll be doing, it's very hands-on, and it looks to me like it's something that is going to sort of be a benefit for our students that will, by the staff that's going there. So, roll call on the motion?
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Absolutely.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Shin?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we do have a change to the student handbook, Ms. Davis is gonna speak about a change to the school lunch program policy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school committee members. I'll try to make this quick. So, our meal change policy that we current have, that is currently in place, is requiring some change based on recommendations from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the purpose of these changes are to ensure oversight and accountability for the collection of outstanding student meal balances. In, in June, when I came to the table to talk about the, the meal change policy in our current handbook, we, we talked about that balances that reach zero, and we, we talked about not allowing students to, to have a choice of lunch if they're, if they had an excessive balance of over twenty dollars, and that their choice was gonna be limited to a cheese sandwich. However, DSC has changed that in saying that we can no longer limit their choices for students that have outstanding balances, that they should be allowed to, to choose any meal, however, we do, we, we are able to limit their choices on secondary meals or à la carte purchases, or desserts. So, so that's the change to the policy. It's, it's not limiting the first meal, but there are, there are limits that you can put on à la carte purchases, including secondary entrees, snacks, ice cream, and additional And that's basically the change to the policy.
Question by Mr. Booton.
Question, what, what do we do for students that are staying after? First of all, free and reduced lunch, is there any opportunities they have here to get anything for a snack? After school, before, what's the late bus come at six?
Yes, there are opportunities, so for students that are staying after school for, in the Homework Assistance and Tutoring Center, we actually have a snack drawer, and anyone that is hungry, we offer snacks to them.
What about our athletics?
With our athletics, we do have some snack machines that are in the athletic pavilion that they can purchase some snacks, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for clarification, Ms. Davis, is really, this is about the school lunch program, not about the after-school or anything like that?
Right, this is strictly about the school lunch program, it's about those students who have overdue balances, and to limit the overdue balances and try to collect the balances, so the school's not accruing large debt in, in relation to, to the lunches.
Nor the parents, Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
How often, how, how many students fall behind? Is there any numbers on that?
There's, yes.
It's pretty high?
It's significant, yes. Yes, so we do send out notices, we're going to be doing that monthly through the Connect Ed system to let parents know if their balance goes over five dollars, that they do have an overdue balance, so that they're, they're aware that if their student, their student is allowed to have a lunch, however, if the student goes back for a snack, that they will not be allowed to, to, to get that snack, until their balance is paid.
Question by Mr. Booton.
I have another follow-up, then. Are we working with, if it's chronic and you see it month after month with these students, is somebody pulling them aside discreetly and see if they qualify for free or reduced lunch?
So that's something else, so, nothing is done?
What do we do?
Nothing is done in the lunchroom to embarrass the student, that's all part of allowing them to have a choice of any lunch, so no one is recognizing that, that there is an issue, that there is a debt. So, what we do is we send out the Connect Ed calls.
And back to the Connect Ed, so if a kid on the third of November is behind, falls behind, their parents aren't gonna hear until the end of the month, thirty days later?
When the, when the overdue balance is over five dollars.
Right.
So, so they, so there's a Connect Ed call that goes out, then there's follow-up by the, the Food Services Department that, that calls the home and speaks to the parent.
Thirty days later, or once a month? You just said it's once a month?
Yes, once a month.
Okay, I, it's unfortunately, the child, the student is suffering because of the parent's lack of action.
Well, not if they pay their overdue, not if they pay their balance.
But my point is, if you have a parent that's not paying attention or doesn't care or do anything, the child's gonna keep suffering.
Well, there also is notices that go out, I would have to check with the Food Services Department periodically, by the Food Services Department, and then we're doing a Connect Ed call on top of that, a phone call on top of that to follow up.
Okay.
To offer the parent a payment option, to offer the parent advice on if they have not applied for free and reduced lunch, that there's an option to apply for free and reduced lunch, so, so there's many opportunities that we're offering parents to try to...
I guess that was my initial question, you are gonna offer, if you, if you see this month after month with the same child, the family's struggling?
Yes.
There's a way to help them?
Yes, there are payment plans that we're, that the Food Service Department is ready to set up with the parents.
Okay, I guess if we can have next meeting on Mr. Giggie's question, Mr. Garabini, if you could provide what we've had the last few years, maybe, of delinquent accounts? I know in the handbook here, it says that kids won't be able to participate in graduation exercises or senior activities, not graduation, but senior activities.
So, so there is a statement that says that they, that they may, that they may not be able to participate in, in senior activities, not, not the commencement exercise, senior activities.
Okay, would anybody like to put in a motion to accept this policy? So moved. Mister, motion by Mr. O'Hair, seconded by Mr. Lemay. Roll call.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
It's hard, yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Shin?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
First, co-op report, requested co-op report, October's the first one we put in the packet. As you can see, it pretty much mirrors last year, even though we've had, we have more students on co-op, the percentage is pretty much the same. I also wanted to add, we did, I want to mention, we have some new co-op partners, Brookdale Senior Living, this is something I'm gonna do frequently, and I'm gonna add this, and so you know that, this came out of a discussion last year, Brookdale Senior Living in North Chelmsford for our health students, we have HVAC students at both the Lowell and Bedford Campus of Middlesex Community College, so those are two good co-op, and also Mitchell Electric in Tingsboro. Those are new ones going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, thank you for the report, Mr. Superintendent. Next on our agenda is going to be the report... Next on our agenda is going to be the report of our business manager, Mr. Garabedian.
Good evening. The only thing I have tonight is seeking the school committee's approval to surplus three pieces of equipment, a folding machine in graphics, a large format printer in graphics, and an alignment machine from the automotive department.
Motion to approve by Mr. Booton.
Motion to approve surplus graphics equipment.
On a, on a motion. Second by Mr. Giggie. Question by Mr. Lemay.
George, relative to the automotive equipment.
Yes.
The alignment machine, what, what would we normally do with something with that?
Well, what we'll do because it has value.
Yeah.
He's estimating approximately $3,000. We will, we will advertise this and put this out to bid as surplus, surplus equipment. You know, there might be, you know, auto stations or whatever interested. Equipment's about, I'm talking to Mr. Cornelius, I believe it's about 12 years old. So anything that has value, we will probably combine the large format printer because that may have value too, so we will put them both.
Do you know, Sam, if this alignment machine can handle pickup truck, trucks, or is it just strictly vehicle autos?
I'm not sure. I'd have to check on that with the auto tech department.
I actually might have someone that might be interested in placing a bid.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, we'll advertise, open to the public.
Yeah.
And anybody's welcome to put a price in.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And this, to clarify the motion, this is going to be to surplus all three of these items, these line items?
I thought we had to do one at a time.
I'm sure we could do it either way.
Whichever.
Okay. We'll do it all together.
I think we could do them all at once.
Modify my motion to include all surplus equipment or everything on all three items.
Seconded by Mr. Giggie. Go ahead.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsis.
Yes.
Mr. Giggie.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Shan.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garabedian. Okay, old business, does anybody have anything to discuss with some old business? That would be Mr. O'Hare.
Yeah, let me just, we have, we have had something in our agenda for a long period of time of things that were going to be done, such as, it's, this has been done so long ago, I forget where the heck it is in the book.
Superintendent's wall.
Excuse me?
Superintendent's wall?
No.
On the agenda.
Yeah, but, yes, but, excuse me?
Go to the agenda, they were listed.
Go to the agenda.
Yeah. Okay. No. There you go. You got it, yeah. But just going down on some of these items, I think maybe we can eliminate a few of them, if not many of them. For example, one, we were going to do a superintendent's wall. We've pursued that with many different people, but we never came to any good marker so that we could do something with it, mainly because many of the people had passed away, number one. Number two, we couldn't, and we couldn't reach those people that were in California and other places. So it, I think we probably should eliminate that because it's just been sitting there in our, in our program for a long period of time, and I don't think anybody is going to disagree with that. The other one, another one during the same period of time was made that we were going to have a superintendent's wall. Same situation took place on that. One, again, one was the, one was the Athletic Hall of Fame, the other one was the superintendent's wall. Superintendent's wall, again, there, the superintendents that we've had in, at Cradle Lowell, many of them have passed and many of them cannot be contacted. So that's, that's been in the book just too long. If we ever want to revitalize that, you know, we can do that, but I'd like to eliminate that. So basically, the only thing is, on the second, we just leave the Athletic Hall of Fame because we'll try another case on it. I thought there was some action taking place at one time, but we've done other things and that kind of get lost in the shuffle. So we'll just prioritize that in our next, you know, the next meeting, or at least I'll go back to.
Foundation is talking about possibly taking it over as well.
All right, good, good. So that fits right in what we're saying. But basically, the superintendent's wall, we'll eliminate that from the whole business.
I, I'm going to disagree. I, I was actually going to be asking about that. Now that things are settled here, the construction's over, we, we have our past three or four superintendents, Bourgeois, Santoro, Casson, still available, still local. Why wouldn't we move forward? And if we're having trouble with some of the older superintendents, then I could see waiting for that, but I, I think there's three right there that were just here. Another eight years, Mr. Mastacola might be moving on, so he'll still be here. But it's something that we've had, we can do, and I don't think it's that tough. In all seriousness, I, I think we do have the, the past three superintendents that, if we're having trouble with a couple of them because they're not here or we can't get them together. I know you had a hard time with the last dedication that you did getting the family all together. You did a lot of work on that, Mr. O'Hare, but we've already got one superintendent up on the wall. I, I think we could add others. And I don't think it would be, if we can't get all of them, see who we can get. And if we have to do one without the family here because it's been so long, at least it'll be a dedication to their family members.
Well, I bring this up only because, you know, I had talked to some of the people that Jimmy Mitchell, when he was here, went through the whole, many, again, we had, Barb Reader was here, he doesn't have anything. The only one that really has something is Bill Collins. We, if I remember right, and just, there just, there wasn't the interest and there wasn't the availability of getting many of those people that we were looking for. If that's what we want to do in the future, you know, that's, that's fine, but I'm just telling you, as far as this, this motion was made, I think we should eliminate it and, you know, go from, go from scratch because it's not going, we're not going to get anybody at this particular time because it's been searched out, searched out, and we can't, and unable to reach those people that moved to California and whatever.
I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding. We had Mr. Bourgeois, who's still local, Ms. Santoro, and Mr. Casson. That's the last 15 or 20 years. So I, I know further back, you, you may not be able to have any luck with those, but the most recent ones, we, we could still have them be up on that wall.
Well, that's something that, that's something that hasn't been mentioned at the time. If that's something that we're talking about today rather than, you know, a month ago, that's fine. We'll readdress it. And, but again, we'll eliminate those people. The next meeting, we'll bring something in, into this meeting and just say, here are the people because I don't think we, they're not going to be recognized, only because we can't reach the family, we can't reach anybody that would be a spokesman for that. If there are new candidates, yes, we'll put those in, on that list.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we move this until next meeting and discuss it next meeting, and maybe Mr. O'Hare and I can discuss it between now and next meeting to talk about a way that we may be able to do this as just one, unveil all of them and honor anybody who's there, not have it, each individual superintendent a separate night for them, but maybe all of them. Maybe we can come up with something between now and next meeting. I don't think there'll be any harm leaving it till next meeting.
And I'm not sure, you know, that wasn't the original plan. However, you know, we've heard Mr. Booton and Mr. O'Hare go on about this for a bit. Would anybody else like to offer their input? Mr. Lemay?
I'm, I'm just thinking out loud. I think the only one omitted would have been Sheila Herbert, correct?
She's still, I, I actually did see, I saw her two years ago at, holding a sign.
I mean, we, you know, the list isn't that long, and like Ray said, they are local. Maybe, maybe we could look into it.
What, what was, what was going to take place, what the, what we were trying to do? If you ever walked into City Hall in Lowell, Massachusetts, you'll see the pictures of all the past.
Mayors.
Mayors, right? Many, and they, they're big pictures, you know, they're very expensive. Our project was not as big as that. It was a smaller, but would basically give the same effect that we were honoring those people. The, again, City Lowell, you know, after a person is in a position for a period of time and is recognized, in most cases, they take those pictures down and either give them to the person that was in it or it goes into a.
The archives.
Archives, yeah.
Okay.
So at any rate, yes. Well, I think realistically, I've gone over this many times, and for the new people, I wasn't including the new people that were coming in because that wasn't the original intent, but yes, we will take a look at those new people or anybody that wants to be or should be recognized and set up a different set of guidelines. Not so much damaging, but if they, you know, I'm just saying if, using the Lowell School or the Lowell City Hall as an example, as a base, you know, you could, you're not going to build a nine-foot picture of anybody, but we would do the plaques, et cetera.
Okay, Mr. O'Hare.
And they would be lasting for a period of time.
Okay, Mr. O'Hare, I'm hearing that maybe we should just table this, just keep everything as is, table it for a moment, and a moment being one or two meetings, have another discussion at a later date. You know, I know that the December meeting is going to be right around Christmas, you know, we could do it at that meeting, or we could do it in the January, February period where my, things might be a little bit slower, we might all have a little bit more time. So we'll just move forward from that. Does anybody?
Not, not to, I don't mean to be holding everything up, but we were talking about past superintendents, but I think I've heard some other names mentioned other than superintendents. So we'll bring that up, you know, the suggestions.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. O'Hare, anybody else have anything on the whole business? Okay, moving forward. New business? Okay, nothing there. Committeeman motions, there are none. Report of subcommittees, I don't believe we've had any subcommittee meetings in the past month, so there's none there. At that point, it looks like Mr. Booton is going to put in a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Giggie.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Mr. Booton.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsis.
Yes.
Mr. Giggie.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare.
Yes.
Mr. Shan.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
George, I don't think.